Good evening and welcome to the Early Planning Board Hearing of Tuesday, April 23, 2019. Is anyone in the audience reporting? Okay, at this time, please pledge allegiance to the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, audience staff, unless I've recognized you, please don't just speak out, okay? So, on the public hearings, I just want to right up front, the ZPT Energy Solutions waiver request and the request for site plan approval has been continued to the next meeting, so if anybody's here for those, those aren't going to happen this evening. We have an A and R for 84 to 86 Rochdale Street. Is there anyone here for that? I'm just going to wait for Adam on that one, see if he's got any input. I think it's stoned, yeah, 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 I think they're good. This is just a realignment, really, of the properties.
Property line, yes.
Yeah, yeah. See what kind of, what do you do, and then there's a point here.
Oh, that's a...
So we're just kind of, sort of going in. No, that's okay, it's already done. So, we're on the A and R 84-86 Rochdale Street. Did you have any input on that, Adam?
Yes, they're just switching lot lines. I guess my understanding is that they did a survey and they're awful, they just want to transfer some property. I didn't see any issues with it.
How can that be done? Pretty cut, cut them right up, subced down.
That would be, I think it is.
Uh, should be, yes.
I think it's...
Yes.
Both property units with concurrents?
Sorry?
Both property units with concurrents?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Entertain a motion. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve, the lot realignment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
continued, that will be until May 28. So if anyone's here for that hearing, that will happen on May 28.
There's no line, should we just sign?
Yeah.
Sign wherever.
ATS is here?
Yes.
All right, 7:05 PM, ATS Equipment, request for site plan approval under Section 8.2.3 and 3.2.7.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow hidden vehicular sales and a repair garage on property located at 47 Washington Street, Auburn, 57, Castle 21. Good evening, Mr. Broder.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here, representing ATS Equipment. Steve Connolly is with me tonight, representing the company. This is the old J.E. Murray site on Route 20, which was repurposed in 2008, when ATS went in there with their existing facility. They do equipment rental, kind of heavy equipment rental, and they've been in that facility now for just about 10 years, or a little over 10 years. The site plan that's in front of you is really an amendment. What they're going to do is, there are a couple of garages in the rear, and this one in particular that we're talking about, it's about 1,400 square feet. It's not a very pleasant structure, it's not considered to be safe, they don't really store anything in there, people don't really go in there because it's just not, not a nice structure. So, the proposal is to take it down, put up a new structure. We went through a couple of iterations, because we did have to go to ZBA, so the plan morphed from an initial proposal to what it's in front of you now. So the initial, the existing proposal in front of you is a 3,780-foot, square-foot facility. It's that much bigger because it's now going to align with the showroom building, which is in the front, and there's a large overhead door, which you can't see from here, but just behind where the little dot circle is, or in front of that, to the right of it, if you could see that spot there in the corner, there you go, there's a large overhead door which, which kind of juts out from the side of the building. So this new structure will come forward from the existing location, hold the same rear spot on the property, I think it's 10 feet offset from the, from the property line, and come forward onto the paved area. And then it will hook into the existing showroom facility, so there will now be some flow between those two buildings there. So it'll be an aesthetically, you know, pleasing, much more pleasing than what's there now, it'll be safer, it'll be much more, have much more utility for the company. Again, no new, no new impervious area, because it's over existing paved area, and so that's, that's really what the, what the proposal is in front of you. We've been before, the Zoning Board of Appeals received approval from them, we had submitted the plans and materials to Graves', and I know, I'm sure you have a letter from them, which, you know, is a very vanilla, very plain, you know, it looks fine, yeah. It's not a very exciting project, but it's very useful for the company, and they've had a nice, nice run at this location, and this will help with that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions?
I had some questions regarding parking, so are you increasing the amount of parking that you have there?
No.
Because there are going to be customers going around that side of the building.
So this doesn't really change, you know, the essence of the business at all, it just makes that space more utilitarian. So right now, they can't pull any machinery inside there, which they'd like to be able to do that, especially in the winter months, and they can't store any of the materials that they have, you know, on-site, they're kind of using different locations that they would prefer to just consolidate with this. So, this doesn't plan any, you know, major change to the business operations. The site, as you can see on there, you know, the customers are kind of outside the fenced area for the most part, although they come into the side of the building and can view equipment, but the area, I guess I'm talking about the area in the rear there that you see, they're not, the customers aren't back in that area. So, no new parking, but...
And with, with the addition, additional size of the building, that doesn't, did you review the parking for the needs, or? I'm just thinking that if you're adding the size of that, I don't know if it's going to be required, or?
We went through the review with Caleb. I'll have to pull out the zoning table if I can find it, I believe it's on the plan. I don't see the parking calculation, but, yeah.
So they're not going to be hiring any more employees? That, that's not what the intent of this is, is just simple storage?
No, it's more use.
Put everything in one location?
Right.
Okay. Nick?
No.
What was the ZBA for, the side setback?
No, the use is pre-existing non-conforming, so this was an expansion of that. We did go initially for a different design, which would have brought us a little bit closer to the side yard setbacks, we had a side yard setback variance, but we revamped the plan, and we don't need that. We're holding the same line as we have now.
Gotcha.
John?
Yeah, I got a few. Is there going to be a drain in this garage? Because I don't see an oil-water separator, or what I got, or?
So, there is, on, onsite on this facility, back in 2008, there was a pretty extensive system put into place. There's a drain out in the parking lot that will still be, I believe, just outside the front door to this facility. And that, that has, you know, the oil-water separators and all that, it was a, it was a pretty extensive system.
So this is a catch basin right here? It's not identified on the drawings, I was pretty surprised at that.
Yes, it is.
Is that where the oil-water separator is?
Our engineer was supposed to be here tonight, and I would have pointed to him to answer that question, but since I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn last night, I'm not going to pretend to answer the question. I might have the original plan. You maybe can't see it, your plans are pretty small.
Pretty small.
Pretty generic, there's no oil-water separator on there.
We didn't call out those, you know, those existing site details, because nothing was changing in that regard.
Well, your car changed, because you're going to put a new drain in from the new building to the oil-water separator. That's a huge change.
We're connecting the roof drains...
To the parking lot. And they're going to flow into the two catch basins, I assume that have been, well, the one catch basin has been moved nightly down the line, according to what I read, had nothing to do with the one that's not identified on the plan, which I found kind of strange. And your fuel tanks right outside that catch basin, which I assume goes into your recharge system.
I believe that's true.
That's not true on the plan.
But again, I think, you know, the, there weren't any, there are no changes proposed to the system in that sense, I mean, there's, the building's going to come out further into the parking lot, so the question is if there are any drains within the building?
And I mean to interrupt you, but, when you're adding a new building of 3,400 square feet, and you're adding roof drains to that that go into an existing catch basin recharge system, you are changing the system. It's a huge change. It's three, it's 2,000 square feet of roof change, so that's more, more water shut.
The, there's a note on the plan, and I will tell you that your plans are small.
Very.
There's a stormwater management note section, which has three, three items, actually, has two, I believe.
We're moving to start now.
Yeah, the original.
No amount of pH resistance infiltration, which is quite necessary.
And Graves agreed with that.
Okay.
Right. When it was, when the system was built, the layman's answer is, when the system was built, it was essentially oversized and could easily handle the new, the new volume. That's my understanding.
Right, but they, to me, they should have put on the plan that, you know, they're putting up a new building, they're probably going to put in a good portion, a new drain that's going into an existing oil-water separator. That's not set on the plan, it's a stormwater management notice, but the interior portion isn't, which surprises me that, that went right by without any question at all. Because I don't know what size drain you're putting into your catch basin for your drain inside the building. You're going to have five of them in there, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you have a drain proposal by the building?
I'm sorry, could you say?
This is Steve Connolly, from ATS.
Could you repeat the question?
Do you have a drain going inside the building, a floor drain?
We were hoping to have a floor drain inside the building, and that floor drain would go into our oil-water separator, which is the, which is, which is this.
The big one.
Correct.
Right, which is that.
We don't need a drain inside, if you tell us we, you know, don't need a drain inside there, we're fine, but the idea is that we have an oil-water separator here, in regards to the, to the stormwater management and the rainwater, our system of, our system comes down to here, we have another separator down here to recharge.
Right, you have catch basins all over the place.
Correct.
But my question was, if you're going to put a new drain in the building, which, of course you would, you're going to have heavy equipment in it, you're going to be able to wash down the floor, and that comes out, are you bringing that into the existing pipe that heads out that way? Or are you bringing that all the way out to the existing oil-water separator?
We're bringing that to the existing oil-water separator, directly into it.
See, I have no detail how you connect it to the oil-water separator. For all I know, you're going to punch a hole, throw a pipe, and throw some water plug in and call it a day. It's not watertight. No detail for me to see, so I, that's why I asked the question.
No, you're right, the, the site plan that was proposed, that was prepared and submitted was very basic.
Is this your end?
Hey Norman, this is Norman Hill from Land Planning.
Good evening, sorry, a little late.
Norman, the question of the, of the design of the stormwater system, and how our new building here will, will interact with that system, could you address that, including the, you know?
Currently, the water runs off the parking lot to a catch basin, and it runs off the roof of the building to a catch basin. So, we're going to be expanding the building in the area where it's already pavement. So, the water runs off the roof, just as it would have run off the pavement, so the same amount of water will be going to that catch basin. And when that catch basin is a gas-oil separator, from there it goes to the infiltration system. So the infiltration system was designed to handle all of that impervious area, so there's no increase in the impervious area on this site.
That wasn't my question.
Oh.
But thank you for the explanation.
Okay.
We had just gotten by that. My question was, you want to put a new drain in the new portion of the building, which I completely understand, I have no detail on how you're connecting it to the existing oil-water separator.
Oh, it would have to be, yeah, it has to be by law.
Yeah, but I don't know how you're doing the connection. For all I know, like I just said at the top, where you walked in, you punch in a hole on the side, throw in a piece of pipe, and throw a water plug in and call it a day. That's not a watertight connection, for all I know.
Oh, I see. It would have to be watertight.
Yes, it would.
Yes.
Which would be a cornseal boot.
Yes.
Something else, maybe, but I don't have any detail saying that. And I don't think the town's going to have time to send somebody out there to make sure you do it. So I have nothing on a plan that tells me that's what you're going to do.
Oh, I understand.
You know, I mean, we can say all we want in a meeting, but I know what happens in the field, I've been in the field for 47 years, I know exactly what happens.
Can we add a detail to the plan, Norman?
We can.
That would, that would indicate exactly what needs to be done?
We can, we're happy to do that.
And what size pipe it's going to be?
Yes.
Because that does increase the flow into that oil-water separator. The flow from the roof, that may not take up any more impervious area, which is fine, but the minute you're adding another 2,000 square feet to a floor, and you wash that floor down, you've just increased the flow into that catch basin, maybe not on a regular basis, but every time you wash the floor, you do.
Right, but that, that all ends up going to the sewer system. That all goes to the town sewer system, that doesn't go to the...
You just said it went to the recharge system.
No, it doesn't. No, it was the catch basin I was talking about out of the parking lot that goes to the recharge, but, but that oil gas separator has to go to the town sewer by law.
So, is that oil-water separator goes to the, so they're taking on, they're taking on basically I and I through your catch basin there?
Not I and I, but no...
You're already taking rainwater, because it's an open grate.
No, no, it's not going to take rainwater, you're talking about the floor drain inside the building.
Right.
So the floor drain inside the building ends up going to the sewer system.
They told me this was your oil-water separator right here.
Who told you that?
The one that's near the tank?
The one that's right near the fuel tank. It's a grate, it shows on the plan, but it's not identified.
Yeah, but that's not, yeah, but that's not the oil-water separator for the floor drain, that's, that's got an oil-water separator, in case there's any grease dripping on the parking lot, that's a totally different type of a thing.
I know what an oil-water separator is, and I know what it does, but I don't see a structure outside identified as your oil-water separator.
Oh.
It's not on the plan.
Oh, it's down the original drawing.
The original drawing of the site, now we're going back in time several years.
So originally, we came around and tied into the sewer here, and during construction, they tied into the sewer over here, since the current manhole over here now that goes to the sewer. So it comes out of these two buildings, goes there and to the sewer, so...
So you got two pipes feeding in the middle, and then going to a sewer manhole, or an oil-water separator?
Two oil-water separator, yes, one from this building, one from this building. So, the one from this building will still be the same pipe going to that oil-water separator, but rather than connecting it to the manhole, I would think they'd pick it up here, because coming out of the building now, when they put the addition on, they'll just probably pick it up right there, you know, it might even be inside the building with a, where's the floor drain in the existing building now? Probably right about here, probably. So they'll pick up the pipe right inside the building, don't have to attach to that manhole.
Well, before you got here, that's not what I was, I was told, you're running the line all the way to the oil-water...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was late, yeah. All right.
So, if you're going to tie into that existing pipe, is the floor drain going to be exactly aligned, or you're going to put a bend in the middle of the line to tie into the existing line? You could have an S curve in there, I don't know.
Well, I can't honestly answer that, I'm not sure where that floor drain is in that building, but I know it's, it's connected to that, so they would just pick it up, and I don't know where the floor drain is going to go in the new building, I haven't, you know, not the architect of the building.
So when you put the floor drain in the new building, are you tying it together in the existing pipe coming out of the building with a Y? So now my question would be, is the pipe going from the building, from the existing drain, to the oil-water separator, big enough to handle two drains? It could be a four-inch pipe, I have no idea. It's not shown.
Yeah, it was designed as a, as a 12-inch pipe, and then not...
I doubt if the floor drain was 12-inch.
No, it's not, it's not, but outside it is.
I think the bottom line is we don't have enough information tonight to make a, you know, a determination on this. Mr. Burks, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, other than what John said.
I think we're going to have to continue this and feedback prepared with all of Mr. Reagan's questions, and have the site plan for us before the next meeting.
Yeah, so we've got to show, we've got to figure out where the, where the drain pipe is, where the drain is in the existing structure, and figure out where it's going to now, figure out where the new one's going to go, and where that's going, where that's going to go and how.
All right, we'd like to see all of that noted on a plan.
And putting in the new floor drain, plumbing code is probably going to make you put a cast iron pipe outside the building 10 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, that wipes out the plumbing, and then you tie into that. That would mean you'd have to run a new drain, probably all the way to the existing oil-water separator. You can't tie it in with a Y, because I don't know how big the existing pipe main line is going on.
I hope they can build a new drain right over the existing pipe, that would be my hope.
If they put a new manhole over the existing pipe and tie it in that way, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, that'd be the best idea.
As long as it's a cornseal boot, or some other A-locks, or whatever, to make it watertight.
Or alternatively, if they don't need or want the drain, let's just discontinue.
That's, now you're in the building code, that's Caleb's, Caleb's call. If the floor drain in there, you're going to wash down, could they handle the flow for another 2,000 square feet? I don't know.
Through the chair, the only concern I would have is when people don't have floor drains, they tend to hose it off out into the parking lot, and let it go to the catch basin, so it also wouldn't require to see the floor drain, just to protect the water.
Yeah, floor drains, best idea, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll come to the...
Clear?
Norman, do you need two weeks?
Any more than two weeks?
I'll make that motion.
May 14.
Change is done this week. So we'll be back in a few weeks.
Okay.
May 14, Burks?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you on the 14th.
Thank you. Thank you.
Waiver requests, AKA upholstery, 203 Southridge Street, applicant, AKA upholstery, request for site plan approval under Section 3.2.3.1. The Auburn zoning bylaws to allow an upholstery shop on property located in 203 Southridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 18, Castle 3. Hi, Leah.
Hi.
Introduce yourself here for this. No, it's okay, introduce yourself, don't be nervous.
My name is Claudia T. Alvera, I'm the owner of the AKA upholstery, we've been of business since 1998, and we're just moving to this new location, trying to get that working.
Terrific, welcome.
Can you show it down?
Yep.
It's almost over here, and I never saw it before.
It's a hidden place.
Yeah. Is it using?
Yep.
Okay. So, what was the business that was in there before? Do you know?
I don't really know. I think it was WD...
Roswerner.
Pardon?
112 D. Roswerner.
Yeah.
And how many people are you going to employ?
Three.
Three of you?
Yep.
So there's ample parking.
Yeah.
So, are you taking the whole building?
No, I'm taking ours, about 200, 2,600 square feet.
Square feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there, through the chair, is there any other company that's staying there now, besides you, or are you going to be the only people in the building?
No, there's a Century 21 on the other side of the building.
Century 21. Did you have any input on that? Yeah, just plenty of practice. Did you have any input on that, Adam?
No, because they were moving an existing building, and they seemed, in my opinion, to have a lot of parking, and the site was already built, I figured, thought they would wash them to come ask for the waivers, and not go through the whole process like normally. Just kind of a simple, looking if that's the board sense.
Sure. Steve, did you have any questions? Nick?
No.
John?
No.
Ron?
No.
Okay. Contain a motion?
Motion for the waivers, yeah.
A motion for the waivers first.
Make the motion that we approve two waivers, which were...
Which were, yeah. Site, writing, landscape.
Can we do them all?
We can do them all in one.
And let's just look.
The waivers. The public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we request the waivers approved.
As listed.
As listed.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Sorry, site plan, oh, hold on, I jumped the gun here. We need a motion for the site plan approval.
I'll make the motion for the site plan approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. This time for real.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Alabama.
Have a good night.
I'll send you a decision slip.
Thank you.
You're all set.
All right, not a problem, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Central One Credit Union minor modification.
They sent us plans last Thursday, I haven't had a chance to review them, I think they They sent us plans last Thursday. I haven't had a chance to read them. Look at the copies in a packet. Town engineer, done pretty busy and the rep pause has been on vacation. So you may not get to read them right away.
Did you have anything on that, Bill? Did you?
We, I, I don't know what the changes, I know they had talked about modification of retaining wall, other items. Yeah, I wouldn't have a chance to look at them at this point.
Okay. Yeah, there's two retaining walls and one of them.
I want to change them.
To rip rap.
Just open the one to one.
And then the other one going from 50 feet long to 24 feet. I think we need to hear from them.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all right.
All right. So we'll move that one along. Laker Street Ashworth Hill subdivision.
Do we need to continue?
We don't have to continue. It's just a discussion item. But thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. Could you please introduce yourselves?
I'm Logan Huffman with Eastland Partners, the developer.
Phil Coragio with Eastland Partners.
I think tonight, if I, if I may, we were asked to come in for an update. And I don't know if there's anything specific where you'd like me to start or just in general, kind of where we are with things. I know there are a couple of issues maybe the board wants to talk about.
Which, which one should we start with?
I don't know. Heard about some of the complaints that the neighbors had in the last couple of months, blasting and the ledge. And I talked to Bill about the ledge that was there and the fencing. Just wanted you to come in to talk to the plan, just to make sure everybody's on the same page and try to make sure everybody is compatible to whatever's going on out there.
Okay.
You know, make, make sure the communication's open and good and make sure the neighbors' concerns are addressed as possible.
Okay.
Concerns everybody has.
Through the chair, if I could just to show, could I, I think I emailed Adam initially with some of the concerns. Request them to come in and give us an update. Initially, two things specifically that were brought to my attention that I have discussed with the applicant project. So one was, and maybe you can explain where they stand currently on the project, was the project originally was not approved with a ledge cut section. That leave it buried from a two to one to a three to one slope in different areas. And currently it, we dropped off about 25 feet. And, you know, it's a concern that that's not according to the plan. So at a minimum, that would require a modification to the plan. And the board has to determine whether it's minor or major modification, but to see if that's something that they were going to pursue. And then also, Adam and I went out there several months ago now with a complaint that they had cleared much more area than what was originally agreed upon. When we had gone out there, we walked probably at least, I'd say 1,000 feet or so, which cleared about a 20 foot swath through the woods. Some, it's like drilling had occurred. We sure to identify any additional ledge cut area. So because there wasn't approved subdivision with an identified clearing plan, and this was not identified in the original plan. They kind of explained to us why that was done and why it was done without communicating with the town. Thank you.
Okay. As Mr. Coyle says, the, the plan was approved with a two to one slope on the high side of the road. And the rock is, or everyone pretty much knows, the site's pretty much all rock out there. And I don't know what if, any involvement any of you have had in it. So before you get into the ground, you can't see what's under the ground. And one of the big things that was a big issue with the board, our original approval, was the amount of trucks, the amount of material that would be leaving the site. So one of the things we tried to do is, in, in trying to minimize it, is we looked at it and thought that we do have, we know it's rock. And we went in there and as we did the blasting for the road cut, we did it in such a way that we did what, what they call the split face method, which basically creates a one to four slope, which is typical. It's a mass DOT spec, goes with the design. You've seen it places. It clearly, as I say, was not on the plan, but what we did is we, we did it to see the quality of the rock and if it would stand and what it would be like when done. We did it. We couldn't come to this board and show you what it would look like until it's done. Because clearly we couldn't see, you know, through the ground. So we did. That's where we are. You know, it came up that there was, you know, some, some complaints, I assume, you know, from neighbors or whatever. And, you know, we started talking with, with Bill and saying, you know, he didn't like it and this and that. And clearly that we'd have to come back to the board. I guess the first thing I would, I would say is, is we're happy to, you know, the slope out to what the plan shows. You know, we're in there. It's our business. It's what we do. The material that's coming out of there, we sell all the material. If we have to take another 20, 30,000 yards out of there, we'll sell it all. And that's what we'll do. It'll just take enough, a couple more months. And, you know, we can bring it back to the two to one slope. But I, I just cautioned that two to one slope is too steep to mow. We'll end up, you know, with something that is probably going to end up with, you know, rock on the side or something because it's too steep, you know, really to mow that kind of slope. And we felt that once it gets finished, we clean it up, we fence it, you know, we, we, you know, we show the board and all. Because clearly we need to get the force and, you know, we're, we clearly know we, we don't have any bonding or anything yet. We couldn't start construction on houses, on any of the lots because, you know, we have to come back to you and get a, you know, bond the road and to see where it is. So, I mean, that's where it is. As I say, we're, we're, we're happy to take it out, to slope it back as it shows on the plan. But I, you know, I believe that at the end of the day, to do it with the ledge face, re-upon, you know, a nice fence at the top, you know, that would be a nice job. And it, you know, it's, it would be, you know, better looking, you know, going into the future. So we'll go with whatever you feel as board, as far as that goes. The second item, we rented, and I may be mistaken, but I think we may have actually rented it from ATF.
No, we are a company out of Spencer.
We rented a, like a brush hog machine on a bobcat to, to clean the undergrowth. So we could move around on our property. It's a 60 acre piece of land. You know, in our view, maybe it's our mistake, but we came in, got approval for a five lot subdivision, which basically accounts for roughly 10 acres of the site. The backland, we mowed the site so we could move around. And yes, we, we did it so that we could move the drill around inside and just do some test drilling to see how deep the ledge is on the other, on the rest of the property. So we could have a good idea, you know, of what we've got and what we're working with going forward.
And was that done in the, the area that the Concom had approved? Was that done within the buffer?
No, nothing.
It's outside of the buffer?
It's outside of the buffer.
Just one small area through the chair that I think is inside the buffer.
It's inside.
Now it'll be a pictures out of type, I think, maybe over the shoulder.
A number of, if I may, a number of these areas. We've owned the property for two years. But I was on the property 10 years ago now, fairly extensive, when the prior owners had approached us. The bulk of the trails that are on the site were there, you know, back then. We did create the new areas, but I've been doing this long enough that, you know, I'm not running out to go, you know, doing things in, in the buffer zone. It was just one area where there was a trail where we kind of went, we went, you know, down and through the trail. But that was it. We weren't looking to do anything other than, as they say, just make it so you can move around and.
Let me just stop you there, please. The, the reason you came here in the first place was to get your site plan approval. And so I'm not sure how it operates in other communities, but in our community, if there are any changes to the approved plan, it's highly recommended that you come here before you start going off and, you know, doing what it is that, you know, you just spoke about. And if the two to one slope was an issue, that should have been brought up at the time of the site plan approval.
It isn't necessarily an issue. It's just there are other things that are, that are more attractive.
So with, with that said, again, that could have been proposed to us at the initial site plan approval as well. Steve, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Nick?
No, I, I think, you know, obviously through the chair, your point is exactly that. If there's going to be changes to the plan after it's made, then, you know, it's recommended that obviously it's brought to a forehead as opposed to, let me just show you what the result is afterwards.
I see.
Exactly.
Forgiveness or permission, right?
And I do understand.
John?
Well, the only thing I have to say is a huge difference between a four to one slope and a two to one slope. But I don't have to worry about mowing if it's a rock ledge. What are you going to worry about mowing it for?
No, it's 25 feet in the year.
Yeah. Fence, no fence, kids are going to climb with it. They're going to jump off. They're going to get hurt.
Mr. Brooks?
Well, I think Mr. Huffman said something about in the beginning that they didn't really know what was under the ground or whatever. But then you mentioned that you had a drilling rig and you were going bringing it around. That's why you cleared some of the areas. So you didn't drill in the area that you're looking at now?
We didn't, we, we didn't have the ability or the, you know, the machinery to do it when we, when we did the original, when we were in for the original, you know, approvals. And, and as I say, it, it, you know, shame on us for, you know, approaching it this way. You know, we, we took it thinking that, you know, it would see if it worked rather than, you know, I, I believe that had we been here as we were going through the process and we would have talked about this, I think in fairness, you know, the board would have probably said, yeah, we need to see what it looks like, you know, ultimately. So we are where we are. I'm happy to fix it. As I say, it clearly isn't something that was done where we thought we were going to get away with something because it's pretty obvious, you know, out there.
Mr. Brooks?
How much fill of the crushed stone that you're processing, would you say that you've taken off so far?
Of 47,000 yards.
How many?
47,000.
47,000 yards. Because I got something from somebody in a text that said it's, you know, for a while it's like five trucks an hour. I imagine it were trailer dumps.
Yep.
And five trucks an hour for eight hours a day anyways. And, you know, a couple of hundred a day, a week loads going out of there. I mean, it's whether or not, I'm not sure how the earth fill removal permit falls into this. That's incidental to when you're developing a site or doing site plan. I'm not sure how it falls in. But we forever had one that said anything in excess of 500 yards needed an earth removal. You're already at 50,000 and you probably got a lot more to go.
I, I think, I mean, Bill, no more than me, in your, in your regs, I believe it says that it's none is needed as long as you have an approved site plan, which.
And you had an approved site plan. You had an approved site plan and now you've exceeded the approved site plan. So did that, does that open the door for, I mean, this, this sounds to me, and correct me, Bill, if I'm wrong, that they're operating a quarry and not, you know.
I think through the chair, the, I guess a couple of questions. One is to Mr. Brooks's comment or point. The, for years, we, yeah, we'd have a separate permit for the 500 yards for the removal of fill. I remember the Lowe's case had kind of modified that where the judge came back and said that because it was approved as part of the review process, that we didn't, wouldn't require those permits separately. Not to say we can't take a second look at it, but I remember that's when things kind of changed, kind of when Lowe's was proposed and it went to court. I guess the question I would have is how much longer do we anticipate blasting the ledge? Because, and removing the rock out of there, because obviously you've gone through the area, chlorine holes and that picture represents about what it will take for about 1,000 feet, not longer. So is it all ledge out there? And if you go, if you build eventually 250 units, how long are we going to be blasting and crushing rock out there? Just going to go on for two years?
Well, it just looks, Bill, when you look at it, it looks like it's a circumvention of the, of getting a permit for a quarry or a gravel pit. It's just an excessive amount.
That's where I'm going with it. At some point, and I, you know, we had a discussion with the, the building commissioner, whether or not, would an additional permit be required? And I, I think the, the view was initially that is, if this is part of the removal of the earth, part of the process in short term, I think that that was something that would require a separate permit as if they were running a business. But if this would have gone on for several years, well, that might change that. So I just think it's knowing what's the timeframe for all of this.
Yeah, I don't, I, I just, I don't think that when we, that change was made to the bylaw during the Lowe's situation, that it was meant to look at this excessive type amount. I mean, you said 50,000, there's another probably, probably, how much more would you say?
30?
30,000?
More?
If we take down that.
And then you get it to where you, 800 foot road supplies your five lots?
Exactly.
And then also, I saw, I went in there today and took a look and I saw a brook coming over the top of the ledge. I mean, are you supposed to do anything with rewriting that or you just, as you go back with the ledge, you just let the water from the brook float all through the land, just come over and fall down into the?
Well, that's what we just noticed that happening ourselves. So now we're taking a look at that now with the engineers.
Mostly, I think, just from the amount of rain we've had, you know, recently. And there is some, where there's some stockpile, some of the area that we, we talked about cleaning, there's some material stockpiled back there. I believe that's creating what's diverting it around this direction.
It's coming right off the top of the ledge.
Right.
The wood was cut, not at the bottom where the stones are thrown out.
Quick question through the chair. The face of your ledge, is that at the toe of the slope currently? Is the toe of the slope of the ledge the same as the toe of the slope when you, if you were still being two to one, laying it back?
At the one to four banter.
Right.
But the toe, toe of the slope, I'm kind of.
The bottom of that ledge, is that at the toe of the slope if you have two to one slope?
Yeah, it's actually beyond.
Beyond? Any idea how far beyond?
Seven feet.
Five to seven feet.
Okay, all right. So some of that would potentially be a filled section if you were to blast it.
Yes.
Cut, flatten it back, lay it back. Cut some of the ledge and then fill some of the toe.
Yep.
As far as the timing goes, all our goal is, and all we have a plan for now is to, as you say, is to build the 800 foot road. That's it. The exploration that we, you know, we did out back, I am happy to say there's a lot more dirt once you get up kind of to the top of that hill and start headed back. You know, it gets much, much deeper though. So to answer it, there would be, I can't quantify exactly how much, you know, ledge there would be for any remaining development. I mean, we don't know yet, you know, because we, you know, we, we haven't done any engineering, you know, really to that point where there's been any quantities. Plus, we haven't come forward with anything to try and seek any, you know, formal approvals or anything. So if we're left to. I'm sorry.
Or modifications.
If, well, it, it wouldn't be part of this plan. But if, if, as you say, if, if you want us to take the slope, I would say right now, worst case, we're talking another three months.
Yes.
Probably. And that would be, that would be it.
Three months of drilling or three, that part of your ongoing project or three months to cut it at the slope?
It, to, to, the, the, the additional blast. It, to, to, uh, the, the, the additional blasting that would be required would probably be another three weeks, which probably would, would happen in a couple of weeks. Um, and then to have, you know, pretty much all the material removed would be, you know, three months after that. And then we should have the whole road, that whole area, you know, cut to subgrade to where we would, you know, our, our plan is to start putting in utilities and, you know, and actually building the actual road itself.
Can you, what was it, Bill? Was it two to one or three to one?
Two to one.
Two, I think it's two to one. I thought it varied if you look at the slope, it varied from, I think, two to one and then it weighed down to three to one in some areas. But you can, Mass DOT standard specifications do allow two to one mowing seed. So it, what I would say, you, if it's ledge though, certainly going to want to overblast it. You're not going to want to put six inches of loom on top of ledges, it's going to wash away. Um, I, whether, they should probably have their engineer look at how deep they should go. Um, I'm thinking at least two feet, but I would want to hear from their engineer and have their engineer propose something.
Cause I'm just wondering if, uh, on everybody's behalf, the neighborhood and everybody's would rather see you use some of the fill that you already have created there and to whatever its size that is or whatever it needs and use that to bank and create your slope instead of blasting for another accessory. You can't use...
I wish it could because the, the edge of the road is pretty close to where that bottom is. So you can't achieve from the 20, 25-foot top, you'd take, you'd be covering your whole road.
Oh, so you have to go back?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, all the blasting we've done, uh, everything's by the book. Uh, we asked, requested for anybody within any of the requirements to do pre-blast surveys. Uh, I can't honestly tell you myself if, if they were done, if memory serves, I think there were a few people that actually refused it. There's been no issues. I would suggest if there's any true and honest concerns about blasting that you speak to the fire department because a member of the Auburn Fire Department and I think a few times, sometimes people from the Oxford Fire Department were there every day. So there's always somebody been on site, there's seismograph records and, and all of that. Um, you know, if there's any, you know, like real concerns about damage or anything like that, you know, from blasting.
Well, it looks like we have an awful lot of neighbors here, so we're going to let them speak to, speak to that. But before we do, Bill, you've been in touch with the, um, fire department, everything has been...
They haven't, uh, passed along any complaints relative to blasting to me, any of the calls of going directly to them. So they're getting a lot of calls of complaints relative to blasting. I'm, I'm not aware of it, but they, they're advising me one way or the other.
Okay. Any comment from the public?
Hi.
Hi, please stand up and say your name.
My name is Mary Quintana and I live at Three Queens Drive, so I live right on the top. Um, I'm an newbie, so I just owned the house. So I wasn't aware of all this blasting or any notice. I have little children. I have a daughter with special needs who is very sensitive to loud. Yeah. So it's a lot of conflict. So, um, one day I was at home alone with my four-year-old and a blast came in, my house totally shook, like literally shook. I took my child, ran out of, out of the house, looked around to see if, like a, I thought a tree fell on my house. I didn't know. So I was like, oh my God, like where's everybody? Like what happened? I still to this day, I didn't know until one of my neighbors came up to me, it's like, yeah, they're blasting. So I had no idea, no notice, no nothing, who to call, what to say, I mean, nothing.
What is the notification process for that?
I believe there's a number right on, on site to note, contact the Auburn Fire Department. There's a phone number there too.
We have our phone number on site.
Your phone number.
Our phone number's on site, or if anybody has any questions or...
But they should contact, to the chair, the Auburn Fire Department relative to the seismograph.
Pardon?
She was saying the seismograph right outside the house, 20 feet. The velocity has to be under one and a half feet per second.
Right. The closest structure, I believe, is where they, they usually set them.
So there's like no written notification that goes to let them know that they will be blasting in the area or no?
I'm nothing aware of.
Per Mass State regs, um, it's, my understanding is that, um, it's within a distance of 250 feet is what...
Is when you have to notify with writing?
Is what, how the, the state regs are, or notify for people to do pre-blast surveys and, and that kind of thing if they want that done.
Yes.
Um, I'm Maria Coker. I live at 12 Blake Street, Auburn House. And, um, on their behalf, I just want to say that they have a fireman and person, blasting person come over and measure our house. But she's getting the same effect and to me, they should do her house, whether it's 250 feet or not, because it's on that ledge. You know how ledge overlaps all the way down? They should be doing all the houses, but that's not what I'm here for. I'm here because, um, the, I had spoken to Adam and I spoke to the Board of Health. My father is 87 years old and, you know, when they first started, you know, when we came from meetings before, it was told that they have to, they have to blast, they have to break up the rock, they have to take it out of there. I understand that. And they were doing it. Now they're processing it very finely and call it what you want, building or quarrying. To me, it's quarrying because they're going beyond what they need to do. And when I was asked who gave permission, they said all of you gave permission. Well, my dad's 87, she is a baby and that stuff is blowing over like really bad. Like this is just one hour on a windshield wiper. And that's thick too, on a truck that sits there. Now what, why can't they take it somewhere else and process? He's got plenty of money, why can't they take it off-site and process it elsewhere?
Thank you. Bill?
Dust control.
Dust control or...
The, um, first day that they had rock crushers on site, they had no water on site. I went there and I think around 3:15, that's when I got the call. And I called Phil directly and, um, told him at this point, because they had no water to shut, shut it down. And it was around 3:30, I waited a little bit, I know Phil was trying to get in touch with the owner. I finally just drove up there and pulled in front of the loader and just said, get it shut down, nothing to be done for the day. And said, until you get water, you can't continue. So they, they bring in water the next day. Um, they had water attached to the rock crusher, so it was watering the, you had the, the plant itself was watering the, the material as it came out. And I said, I also want a water truck here to water the, uh, the lot area as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then in piles that, especially on a windy day or a hot day, um, to, to water those as well. After they did that, it was much better. I can say, I, I haven't gotten a lot of calls this past few weeks, it's been raining so much. I think my concern is that when it's summer, gets air and it's dry and, you know, hot air and wind, that, that's when it's going to get, going to get bad.
And if this is going to continue for three more months, then it's going to get hotter and drier and...
Well, and that's, that's a concern too, is it's, it's a, you know, I brought up the issue, the fact that right now it's a ledge cut section that, you know, my, my concern is that whether that poses a hazard long-term, if it stays that way, it's going to be there for, forever, quite frankly. Uh, and I recognize the additional blasting could, could add three weeks of more, three weeks more blasting, uh, but I think it's something certainly worth discussing. Uh, but, you know, whether or not, do you not blast next three weeks, but, you know, do you just continue and, and do it the right way and have the slope there so that, you know, 50 years from now, we're not dealing with some kid falling off that ledge area. Certainly something open for discussion.
So, you know, it brings to my question, the part of you processing this to where it's real saleable and marketable for you, takes an additional long period of time. And this is what I think we need to look at with the earth removal permit. Is it to just allow them, I would say, to get it off the site to facilitate whatever they were going to build there in a road? Or is it to let them process it to where they can market it? I would, do not believe that was the intent of the bylaw of the town. Or the, or the court ruling with Lowe's.
To the chair, just want to point out again, this would be, uh, things that all have been prevented had we, uh, been notified or modified. And is the reason why you notify, uh, them of changes to the plan, not just the, you know, we'll see what happens and show them the finished product type of thing so that the neighbors and everything are impacted too in certain circumstances like this especially. So...
Definitely. I think we should probably look into that a little bit further and find out, um...
And through the chair, that's a very good point because if, if it was not determined those legs from the beginning and it was determined after the fact, they started digging and decided they're going to start blasting at a four to, a one to four slope, if they gone back to the board, you know, for modifications to the plan, um, you know, it could move forward differently.
I just wanted to say when I first talked to them, there was one machine going, now there's two. I understand they want to get it done really quick, but the wind was blowing on Friday. I'm sorry, I didn't have your number. And I kept calling and calling and I knew it was coming to a meeting, but the wind was blowing really bad and the stuff is fine. You can't even see it, but you can't even breathe in it, it's so bad.
I'm sure it's other.
Anyone else from the public?
My main concern is when they first started the plan, they had a nice picture of a road going up to the hill in a cul-de-sac and they pretty much just plowed through the woods like they're building 300 homes.
Correct.
And the pool of water at the top's always been there. It fills up with water in the spring and then it slowly drains. And as far as I know, that's my definition of a burnout pool, which is something you're not supposed to build on or around. So I just don't think they followed the plan. And it's a gravel pit, not a housing project.
Yeah. So I think a couple of things, Adam, we want to note that we should delve a little bit into the quarry operation that's currently going on and the burnout pool that we just mentioned, CONCOM. Um, so anybody else that wanted to...
Mark Limblum, One Eames Drive, Auburn. Uh, same thing, I don't want to just beat the dead horse. It's a quarry. I mean, it just goes on, it's all people here. I live on One Eames Drive, atop of the hill. That's all you hear from when your truck stage at 6:30 in the morning. Yes, they don't go, start work till eight. Jol, all the tri axles are showing up at, uh, 6:30 in the morning. We hear them all banging around, we hear them do their empty, you know, empty their buckets or whatever. That happens almost every single day. We hear it, that happens. On average, you're running, like on a Saturday, this past Saturday, you're running four hours out, four, four truckloads out per hour. That's 16 truckloads on a Saturday of a tri axle. On a current weekday, currently, what you've been running is five, five hour, five tri axles out an hour. Um, I believe it was more a few weeks ago. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's 40 truckloads a day. If a tri axle holds 17 yards, that's 3,672 yards a week, getting hauled out of a four, a four-house subdivision plus one house. Also, again, the grade of, what was, I'm trying to figure out the purpose of what the Conservation Commission's initial part was, because if you go there, again, you see the pretty plants, it's all white, there's nothing there, there's not a single tree. What was the purpose of, of having discussions of trees over a certain size, of having, um, specific flora that's in there, in the wetlands, all that stuff? There's nothing left. It's, it's clear cut. I mean, you, you make your boundaries, you go four feet off of this guy's property, you're leaving about three feet from where your property line is now to where his, to where the finish line is. I mean, the whole thing's gone. Same thing, Vandell's property, you're right behind theirs. December 26th, when it's Christmas time, no one's open. We wake up to have, uh, to have, um, excavators going, going right, right along our property line. Your brush, if your brush includes, you know, 10, 10, eight, uh, 12-inch trees that are, you know, ground down, all the Mount Laurel that's ground down, all the trees that are pushed over. And I'm not just making stuff up, that's what these pictures are, I don't know. I apologize, we were out there, we thought we were later on or we would have been here sooner, so my bad, we were trying to, uh, trying to keep quiet. Um, let's see, um... What's the, the other thing is, what's the purpose of a staging area with all the property that's wiped, that's, that's gone, that's leveled? Why, why do you have to come right behind the three houses and make, I'm going to estimate, three acre staging area right behind everyone's property when you have the whole lower lots gone? That's just wiped out, no slope, just a big open pit. The road all up, there's not a single tree. You have the one big rock mound that's in the far left-hand corner. Other than that, it's clear cut. There's nothing there, no top, I know you have your topsoil staged, um, but what's the purpose, why do you guys have to come from where the end of your cul-de-sac is to where the staging area is? That has to be what, 1,000 feet? That's about 1,000 feet. That's a long, there is a long span between where your houses are being built and a staging area that's 300 feet off the back, you know, 200 feet or so off of our, off of the front of my house and off of the side of their house and off of the side of your grandmother's house.
Did you want to answer that? Do you have a reason why you staged it where you staged it?
You have to start somewhere.
Okay.
You can't start in the back and moving all around.
What we staged there is the topsoil to keep it on site so that it can be used back on site.
By law?
And one thing, with all due respect, it's our property. Now, and I don't know if this board is real receptive to this, but...
It's your property. But you also have, pardon me, it's your property, but you also should take into consideration your neighbors while you're doing this.
We do every day, every single day. And they're, they're, they're talking about these things. Number one, I mean, where in the world is the fairness? All of these people are on our property, they're trespassing on our property, but that's okay. And it is okay, people, we don't mind. But you are all trespassing on our property. What I'm doing at the end of the day is I'm just trying to develop my property within the rules. The ledge and all this stuff...
No, it's not within the rules.
We're, we're...
There's no need to go to the planning board if you don't follow the plan.
Right, that's true.
Time out.
John?
You mind?
No, go, go for it.
Brush hog, you went further than you want. You know why you went further than you want? Cause you rented it for a certain amount of time and you got the most use out of it. That's why you went further than you were supposed to. Cause you made the most use out of your rental. You can stand right here, look me in the eye, deny it all you want, but that's not the truth, cause I know how it works.
No, no, sir, actually, no, we didn't do it, it wasn't about the time. We wanted to get a bunch of brush hogging done, just like anybody would mow their lawn here.
In any area you're going to work, in any area where you're going to stage your, stage your material, like your, your loam or whatever rock you're crushing for your use. And now you said, you have three months more blasting, you neglected to include all the utilities you have to put in. That's another three months of blasting.
No, no, it's all done at once. It's, everything is all...
You're blasting all your trenches all at once.
Everything's all done at once.
So you're, you're, you're overblasting everything for your trenches. So you sewer water and drain it...
Every one of them.
Five feet apart and you've blasted it all at once.
Depends on the pattern that they did, but all the depths are done.
Point that she said, she heard a loud blast, if she's hearing a loud blast, you're not blasting properly, you hear a muffled sound if you've covered it properly with, with rubber mats. You can argue with me all you want.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I don't know how much blasting you've done in your career and I'm not going to argue that. I doubt that, sir.
All right, we're not going to get into a, you know, pissing contest here. A couple of things, if there's any, any modifications that need to be made, come here first before the work gets done, okay? And we're probably going to have to look at a modification for what they've already done, correct?
Excellent.
Also, we're going to confer with, um, Town Council in regards to the quarry operation Also, we're going to confer with town council in regards to the quarry operation that's going on right now.
That's good.
And we'd also like to be in touch with the Conservation Commission. Anything else, guys?
Any more public comment?
Anybody else, public comment, Mr. Limblum?
Thank you. Another thing on the Albert Street. The people there, I know they're not here today, they have kid issue, a kid birthday party. So, what, 18 months ago, close to two years ago, when the trees were taken down on Albert Street, when the bushes and shrubs were taken out of Albert Street...
My apologies.
Well, it's all been graded back out, and now it's just nothing but, you have wattles, you have stakes, gravel. People would like their lawns back, and I understand you still have to get your other sidewalk and stuff like that, but for all of last year, all of this year, people still have four and a half foot, five foot blockage on their front of their yard, where the trees are gone, the shrubs are gone, everything's gone, you just have wattles and stakes. Even if it's going to be done later on, I'm sure they would like to have something that resembles a front yard back on that corner of Albert Street.
What's the plan?
The plan is we wish we could do something faster. It's all national grid, they have to move the telephone poles back. That's what we've been waiting on. If somebody's got a magic wand and can get them out there faster, we would love that.
Good luck with that.
Absolutely love that.
Well, just keep us up to date on that, would you please, so that we can...
What I know, as, and we updated today, our understanding is, is the work order has been issued finally. And I said, I asked my people today, I said, "What does that mean, a couple of weeks?" He said, "Well, I wouldn't say a couple of weeks, but we're certain the work order's been issued." I assure you, we would have finished the curving, we would have finished the paving and the sidewalks and all itches. We've been, got to get the poles moved. And that's it, Madam Chairman, as far as that goes.
So you bring them back for modification to the site plan?
Just to the chief of clarification, are we looking, are they looking for modification for the 1-4 ledge, the lead ledge, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I think, do we want to keep it to the 2 to 1?
1 to 2.
Well, I agree with you, if they want to go with the 1-4 slope, they need to come back for modification, I just wanted to, I didn't know.
Well, that's an option that wasn't original on the plan.
Right.
The plan was for 2 to 1.
Right.
And you're asking for us to go as a modification to 1 to 4.
To consider.
First, we have to consider that, and after that, if not, we go back to the 2 to 1 and see how they're going to do it.
And again, I do apologize.
Mr. Limblum?
Same thing, apologize. So we were out there, again, we were trying not to be disruptive on this side, so we didn't catch the whole part on the whole 2 to 1 ratio part, so again, we know there's a 25, 30 foot sheer cliff. Was the comment that it has to go back further because of, it wasn't...
It does, or it will cover the road. If they don't go back further, and then when they rebuild that slope, it will end up covering the road.
Okay, and there's no other room and anything else there that you guys can do to compensate?
Put a fence on top of a 25 foot wall.
That's what's there now, big ugly silver fence. All right, again, just, I know we're just going to be frustrated to have to have all that more junk going on for a miscalculation.
Guys, that's a question, what type of rock is that, shale or granite?
It's more of a rotten granite. It's actually blasted really well. And, you know, that part of it's gone, you know, pretty well.
On that particular slope, you couldn't rip it?
Oh, no.
Is it blasted?
No, not this, it would take less.
That's not that rotten.
Yes?
Maria Coker, 12 Blackest Street. Okay, my question is, I said my piece, now I wanted to know what you guys were going to do about it, but I see, because I don't understand modification and all that. And we don't trespass on his land, but it's trespassing on our airspace, because my dad cannot go out his house, he cannot open his windows, but he could when they did break the rock and put it in the trucks and took it out like they were before, and they had a processing machine that was processing it that did not bring anything over there, which they're running now with that fine, fine one. It's the fine, fine one we don't want. And they do water it, but you take a rock and smash it with a hammer, it's still dust inside. That's all I want to say.
What we're doing is we're going to be conferring with town council to discuss this further, and we'll keep you posted. What's next, next steps?
I will get in touch with council. If you consider the modification, we need to see something, you know, some plan to show the modification. We can consider our options on the slope.
Okay.
All right, I'll look into the rental pool, see what the situation is with that.
Yep, get Concom involved. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Package I found subdivision waiver on the granite curving, is there anyone here for that? Would you want to speak to that?
Yes, I spoke to the developer at that site. Wait, granite curving, just paved carpet. Send me anything else, I'll have everything.
Garland is already going to be denied. He wants to think of coming up to Curry Street, and the minute you do that, whether you put Cape Cod Burman or Standard Burman, he's going to get wiped off by a plow. So then it's going to fall to town 10 years from now to go repair it. You submit a granite curving, we're going to put granite curving into my book.
I agree. Briar Cliff Estates subdivision discussion.
Bryn Mawr, sorry.
So we're the only three left.
Yeah, that's us.
Come on up to the table and let's talk.
Yeah. All right. That was fascinating. So my name is Kevin O'Brien, I live at 25 Briar Cliff Drive in Auburn. I came here in 2014. I moved to Bryn Mawr Estates in 2012. I did a presentation last time, I guess I'm supposed to submit stuff.
Well, this is for discussion, we'll take those and we'll give an opportunity to look at those, but if you want to give us the Reader's Digest condensed version of what's happening, that'd be great. We're pretty aware of...
So, basically, we have properties that slope down. The first set of properties here slope down to each other. This property happens to be raised, so this property, which is my property, is the lowest on the hill coming down. And then there's a fall off or a cliff.
Kevin, can you just talk up a little bit?
Yes, certainly. So these properties here are down a cliff, and I know...
Those the ones on Amherst?
Amherst, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And when I moved into the neighborhood, I knew nothing about building, I still know very little, but I have watched the entire development go up in the seven years that I've been there. So it took me a couple of years to figure out what was going on with all the water that would drain off, the silt that would drain off. And in 2014, you know, I was watching Gallo dig these trenches out, two properties up from mine, and they would dry out and then they would fill up about four feet deep of water. And I started to wonder, you know, what are they going to do with the water, because eventually it's going to come down to my property. And that's when I came to the board and asked about, so it happens on Briar Cliff, it also happens down the cliff on Amherst, or did. Both properties now have homes on them. And when I was here last time, I believe, the board called Gallo in to talk about that and some other issues that had arisen from the water drain off in the neighborhood. In 2016, or I'm sorry, I think this is probably most of us could have, so the lagoons, as we call them, were up here, two properties up from mine. This is a next door neighbor. And after Gallo came here, you know, this has explained to me that what the plan was for the neighborhood was that each property would have a swale on it, and the properties that have the large drop off, instead of the water going down, would swale to the front of the yard, and the water would go down the driveways and into the water mitigation system, or I don't know what you call...
Catch basin.
The catch basin?
Catch basin. And I don't know what the pipe is that runs on easements across three of the properties that go out back to the... Can you bring up the property?
What is that, Bill, what is that?
There's a drainage trunk line.
Trunk line?
So I expected that to happen. In 2015, next door to me, they leveled off their swale so that the water wouldn't accumulate there and just came down to my property. In 2016, Caleb and Bill came out to my property. At the time, neither Jason or Sean, who had moved into the two lower properties...
On Amherst?
Yes.
Neither of those properties were built, and I remember standing at the edge of my property, looking down and saying, "Eventually, all the water's going to end up down there, whoever the poor people are that end up purchasing those properties." I know that Gallo won't tell them that.
Of course not.
So in 2016, after that meeting, a storyline started to be developed by Gallo that once the lawns grow in, it'll absorb the water, and...
The lawns planted on the gravel?
Yes, yes, the clay and gravel.
Clay and gravel and discarded piece stone, anything else that was in there.
Cups and whatever else they want to throw in there.
You know, outside, and for me, on my property, I experienced it both in the front of my house with water runoff that is eroding my front yard, and then in the back of my yard, the water is now accumulating, so it's pretty sloppy, slushy most of the season. And I don't know if you can bring up any of the videos that these guys have forwarded showing?
That were on the email?
Yeah.
Can you bring them up so we can see them?
Yeah, basically creates a, I hadn't even, I just, you know, moved into the house, I had a fence put in around the property. You know, we were just getting ready, you know, to be finished with it. We had that huge rainstorm last year that put three inches of rain in an hour, and basically created a gorge right down the side of my hill into my yard. And now I have, in some places, the channel is almost a foot deep, you know, from the runoff. And it's affected his yard, because it goes into my yard, my yard can't handle all of that water, and it all flows into his yard. We just had, you know, I put in extensive drainage in my yard because of what we saw afterwards. So, I mean, I have three different drains in my yard used to try and dispel some of the water that comes in. Yeah. And it doesn't, it's near, it's not nearly enough to handle all that comes down there.
What'd you put in for drainage?
They ended up, they, now they're doing it as standard in all the yards. They basically dig a trench.
Gallo's doing it?
Gallo did one part of it. On every property, on Amherst, but for mine, which is the last one. I put it in last summer myself, at my own cost.
What exactly did he do for the drainage?
Basically, we had a drain, I have a drain coming off my neighbor's yard that they, the pipe that they had put behind, that, you know, that's the newest one, but I wish I could show you the one from last year, it's worse than this. And you can see, he has that manhole cover down here, and it just fills up my yard. I had to crack it open to get some of this water out, and I was already open this much to try and let some of the water out, and it filled it up even with it being cracked open, so I had to go back out there and basically pry it open more and stick a rock, a bigger rock underneath it to try and... And this is about 7 o'clock in the morning, yeah, and...
Is that manhole on the drain line or on a sewer line?
No, it's on the drain line, it's on, it goes to their retention pond.
So why didn't you put a catch basin on it?
If I could, jump into the chair. I did talk to Jason, who was out there a couple of times when we went out. I think Adam and I went out, and I went out again last Friday, and then Gallo, Stephen Gallo, a couple of his workers out there. The big, the main concern that I was looking at, because the video demonstrated that waterfall coming off the back of, is it number 25, Kevin?
Yeah.
25. I don't know if we got, can you go to the aerial on this, on GIS? The back of, well, we gave it by the map that he's showing in his handout. On sheet seven, you can see, trying to orientate, the white lot, is that the...
This is 25 Briar Cliff.
Nope, that's Amherst.
That's Amherst right there. Shoot out a little more.
There you go.
Yep, that's his house right there.
Okay, can you pan over a little more, Adam?
And that's me and Sean right who moves. Yeah.
Right there, that's 25?
Yeah. Okay. It was done under four.
So what it looked like, excuse me, it looked like to me, a lot of these properties are all draining this way, and this particular house lot is graded higher. You can see that it's built up. There's a natural, not natural, they graded it all to discharge right here, okay? And there happens to be a town drainage easement that eventually, if and when the road is accepted, we would accept that easement along with it. So my concern was, concern for what they're going through, but part of my concern with that is where it's now private property, we're a little bit limited to what control we now have, since they've already purchased the property. But because it is over an easement, when I talked to Gallo, I said, you know, is that will degrade the drainage easement and could wash out everything down to my pipe? So I need to put in a drainage structure in the back of that property. So he, during the meeting, was agreeable to put in drainage back in this corner where this water's going to, and then it would have to get piped down to, is it 19? Jason, what's your address?
Four, Amherst.
Four, Amherst, four, Amherst. It'd get piped down to here where there is a house now. They're all houses here now, the only ones I think vacant is this one.
Top corner.
That one.
Oh, is that top lot in the corner?
It's the last one.
That's the last one. Gray house to the right of it, that's going to be another lot?
He's going to build on it, yeah.
So all these temporary detention ponds that he had constructed, there's all houses out here now. So all that water's going somewhere, right? So, and I can tell you, back, I think it was last August, that rain came down so hard coming off this hill, it was incredible. And quite honestly, there's no kind of drainage that could handle that flow. So what I did say, that even with the drainage being installed, it's not going to guarantee you won't get runoff. What I did ask them to do is, if they put in a catch basin, to put in a dome shape frame so that a grate, so that it doesn't get plugged with leaves, it's less likely to plug up because it's dome shaped. I asked them to give, provide me with a drawing from your engineer. I'm just making a suggestion, what I think would potentially work, but I want something for a pavement trail from them proposing a solution. So they indicated they would do the work. Mr. Gallo left, we had another drainage issue up above we were looking at, so I ended up talking to his workers and telling them I need a, I need a plan as well, and I also sent an email advising them that not just a solution, he agreed to do the work, but in addition to that, want a plan, so we have a record of it. Plus technically, it'd probably be a minor modification as well, so.
So let me ask you a question, Mr. O'Brien. The, all of the water that you're now experiencing on the side and the front of your property from these pictures, I see, are those your front stairs that are...
Yeah, the stairs...
Being wiped out and pulled away from the house?
Have sunk about eight inches into the ground.
Was that an issue before that house was built next to it, and the way they graded it, or did that happen after that grading was done?
So the slides three and four are showing the lagoons here and here. This property had been built and the water was accumulating on this corner. They did put some kind of pipe in here that comes out...
Which drains it actually almost right into my yard, too.
So there's a pipe that's in this ledge that's going up to this property, and the water just pours down here. But in 2015, they took the swale off there, so the water just runs straight down into here. And I'm not a particular fan of putting a catch basin in here because it doesn't solve any of the problem. And this just, this accumulates most of the water, the excess water would go into there, but, again, it was explained to me in 2014 and 16 that the water that was, you know, four feet deep here was going to be brought out to the street and down into the catch basin, and that the water that was in this yard would go out to the street. The problem here is, this driveway was constructed during a work stoppage, you guys, or the town plan at the time.
Right, I remember that, yeah. Caleb said to stop, and it went back the next day and it was paved.
Right.
After he had been told not to do it.
So they put a lip on the driveway, so the water would go down, but the lip is disintegrated, so the water goes halfway down the driveway and then spills off.
Into your yard?
Correct.
So, Bill, if they put that pipe in and that drain, how is that going to remedy this other issue with the water that's coming off from that property that's just above Mr. O'Brien's property?
I haven't seen that drain that he's referring to, I'm not sure if that's a...
I'm not sure if that's a gutter drain or a foundation drain or what that might be.
Not, they're not in drains, it's just the volume of water that comes down.
The way it runs off.
Right.
The difficult part for me is that all these properties have been sold, people live in all these houses now. Typically, I get, as a town engineer, I inspect the roadway work, but don't get involved with the.
With the grading?
The grading of the house. I think going forward with under our new subdivision, I mean, our stormwater regulations, I think we should be looking at requiring an engineer plan stamped by a professional engineer for any house development. Because what happens is, we have a set of plans for the subdivision, doesn't show a specific grading for each house. They pull a building permit, which typically they'll show a footprint of a house, property lines, and no grading. And the contractor is basically grading it as he goes as though it was appropriate. I think unfortunately, you really should have an engineer designing every house and controlling the runoff so that we know what's gonna happen. Now that all these houses have been sold, people live in them, you know, I felt comfortable saying, we need some drainage work completed here because it's within the easement area, and it literally could wash out the entire area, and that would be owned by the town.
Is that the only easement area the town has at that?
There's some in the back, but I haven't heard of any.
Some on the other side? And they're not having a problem on the other side?
Well, there could be problems down there too. I've had, hadn't gone down there over the past several years, they haven't cleaned that ditch out. There is a ditch that runs along the back there.
So, once we, say we put in that, or he put in that, and then eventually the town owns it, and then the town's responsible for it.
Unfortunately, at that point, we're gonna be responsible.
So, the bond that we have currently, is that?
That's sufficient currently.
Sufficient currently.
And just, we're not comfortable doing that. I appreciate the thought of it, but it's not gonna solve any of our problems. It might plug the hole, but it's just, the water's all gonna stay in our yard, and.
Well, it would drain your backyard.
If I might, where all the water comes, it's sort of, where it doesn't run down the hill, it sort of settles into the hill. So what we get out of the base of our hills is it just pours water. As I said, I put in a drain last summer.
Settles it in.
Before I put that drain in, it would be all summer long, and at the base of my hill, you would walk on it, it would be like walking on a moon.
Yeah, mush.
Right.
Is it coming out of the bottom of the storm?
It's coming out of the hill itself.
Through the chair. Through the drain.
Excuse me, one minute.
Through the chair, this hill is all compact glacial tilt, and it's probably a drumlin, which is very poorly draining soil. You could dig a hole there now and probably hit water at 18 inches. I don't think that's something that you're going to be able to rectify. You're on a hill, and when you have slopes that drop off 20, 30 feet, the bottom of that slope, water's gonna bleed through. You could put curtain drains and swales at the bottom of it to try to divert it, but each house would have to do that separately and then control where the water's going to go.
So you'd have to basically get all your neighbors to build up the edges of their driveways, number one, to make sure whatever water was coming that way would go out to the street where it should be going, and then have somebody come in and grade your backyards. This is.
I think, going at this point, where all these, all the houses are built except for one at the very top of the hill, you have to go in there now and regrade the entire subdivision to control the runoff, I think it's more looking at where the problem area is and how do we fix those now?
Isolate those.
Well, the problem is, is everything's running down from the top of the hill down to, his yard basically is the catch basin right now. And mine is the spout that shoots everything out.
So my drain is all full of mud now because it's all taken the hill with it and filled into my drain?
Well, recently on the last storm, the muddy picture you saw was the latest one. I have a much better video of when it first happened, I mean, it's a torrent of water.
I think I saw that video.
The problem is, is that now it's, it goes into the drain, and the easement goes underneath the road, goes into our neighbor's yard across the street from my house. He's got another manhole cover that sits there, and basically it fills up with so much water. I don't know how much silt is now in that system going down to the retention pond, but his sewer cap floats and water comes out of it.
So, there is a requirement that they keep those catch basins clean, correct?
Catch basins need to be cleaned. Before we accept the road, I want all the lines cambered, because there has been a lot of silt.
You're gonna find a lot.
In that drainage area and that subdivision. Even before Gallo took it over, it was even worse. So, they have to camber the lines, and they've filled up with silt, they have to clean them.
So it's really a two-pronged approach here. We identify the areas where they, where we think improvements can be made.
Right.
And then, it sounds like there's a civil lawsuit with all of.
Because, I mean, I put over $10,000 over what I initially spent to have, like, you know, to have the yard done, have the fence put in.
Yeah.
And I put in $6,000 worth of arborvitae's across the top, and now four of them are collapsing. The earth has dropped this much right at that spot, and I have trees collapsing in. And now they're gonna say, we'll just put a drain in there, but what do they do about the money I, extra money I had to put in? I had to, you know, I had a little stone wall, I had to build up more to try and catch everything before it flowed out into the street, flowed down into his yard. And now we have parts of the hill where water's just springing out of the side of the hill. You know, you go down about 10 feet from my fence line, and the most recent storm, I mean, it's literally just coming out of the hill and shooting into his yard, which is now.
I would recommend looking at all three videos. The first one was when the house was being built before I took occupancy.
You've got the links here, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
The second one is the most, the hardest to watch. And, you know, I understand, I've heard a few times from a few different people, well, we had a lot of rain. But I've been documenting this since 2014, and it's a lot of rain every year, so I don't think it's, we magically caught video at the right time. And I think, not to be adversarial in any way, but when I look up here, I see a hill that's very different than 2014, when, you know, none of these houses were built. This wasn't built, that wasn't built, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't, and that wasn't, and that wasn't. And none of these properties were owned individually, so.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been addressed.
Correct.
I feel like, I'd like to know more about in 2014, when I did identify that that water is all gonna end up down here. What was addressed with Gallo and what?
I wanna know what their thoughts were when they basically made a bowl out of his backyard. I mean, and we've got, not just the way my bushes have sunk in, I mean, it'll rain really heavy, and that's, but it doesn't happen as it's raining. It'll rain super hard, and then you wait a couple minutes as everything basically comes down and fills it in, and then it's just like.
Yep. Now you're laughing back there. Are you here for Mr. Gallo?
I'm in no way connected.
All right.
I was just saying to Bill, that's the time of concentration, it's when you, your peak of your storm, you have a certain time after that.
And then it's just like.
Before that, that peak of flow reaches you.
So, I mean, it's obviously not just his backyard into my backyard, it's everybody's backyard ending up in his backyard and then evacuating into mine.
And then overflowing into his.
And then to his.
I mean, certainly, I don't think we're resolved tonight. We can talk to town council.
Yeah.
And see what he advises. We have a bond, I suspect that it may be with their private properties now, it may be difficult for us to do too much.
But eventually, we're gonna end up owning all of that.
We'll own the road, not private property.
We'll own the road, we'll own any of these drains that are put in, the easements, the.
Well, the easement, I feel pretty strongly that we need to put drainage there. Quite honestly, it's easement to the town. If we own that road in that easement, and I have a drainage problem that's washing away my drainage infrastructure, I'm gonna put a drainage structure in to catch the water if we can't take a chance of all that washing away. So, I can't imagine that that's gonna get controlled any other way at this point. But certainly, I don't wanna do something the property owners don't want us to go in there. It's a catch 22, we have the easement, but it's technically not our easement yet. So right now, it's Gallo's property, not the town's.
Can I respond?
Sure.
So, we were very aware of the easement as it was written, and I believe signed by both Jason and the Courtney's. We revised the easement with the deed, so there, there is no right to add to the system. The system can be repaired and general maintenance, but.
Through the chair, then, if that were to be the case, then when it washes away, I'm going to replace it. So, I think it makes no sense to add a drainage structure, but if by chance the easement doesn't allow us to do that, I'm not gonna, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna claim to say it can.
Right.
I mean, after the town council.
Yeah, let's put that with the documentation.
And these are the two other easement deeds.
Okay, yep.
Is there a way, Bill, we don't give him a permit for the last building lot, and we held the bond? To get him to put the drainage structure in, you think needs to be done in that?
They're willing to put it in. They're willing to put the drainage structure in, but I do want an engineer plan still. I just asked for it Friday, so.
Okay, all right.
But at this point, again, if Kevin is saying his deed does not allow for that, we don't have an easement, it's not the town's. So right now, it's Gallo working on it, on private, you know, dealing with the private property.
I understand, I think we should get as much out of him as possible, so we don't wind up spending the town's money trying to correct somebody else's problem.
How much is the bond?
$250,000, I think.
400?
$4,000? So, how many of you have water in your basement?
None yet.
No water in your basements? That blows my mind.
Not, not yet. But I've only been living there about a year or not.
Yeah, if you haven't had it in the last year, you're not gonna have it unless your foundation cracks.
There's a lot of cracks. There's a lot of cracks, oh yeah.
That's what's happening now.
Every 10 feet of concrete cracks.
Yeah, yeah. So, my question is, is, I mean, I know the drain is not the sole be-all, end-all solution for the problem we're having.
But it could mitigate.
But I gotta tell you, from my side, and, you know, I know Kevin's not a fan of it, but being on the bottom side of everything, you know, I don't know how to say, I'd rather have that than have what's happening now. Even if it's just something to put in right now, you know, to take care of that, and then make sure that that's not it, we wipe our hands of it and that is all done. Because he's still gonna have all the water in his yard, it's still gonna all come down. And if the drain can or can't handle it when they have a 100-year storm, then it's still, at that point, if the drain's not gonna handle it, it's still gonna all end up in my yard, in his yard. You know, it needs to be a solution before it all reaches the graded low point by Gallo in this building. I mean, that's, it's all gonna always end up right there.
It has to be picked up along the way.
Yeah. I mean, I have a, right where my arborvitae's are, I have, I brought mulch, I mean, right out to the grass. Now there's so much rain, it's basically created a channel, and it runs right down that seam, you know?
I can see that.
Yeah.
So like Bill said, you know, we're not gonna solve this here tonight. We do have a couple of things we're gonna look into, we'll talk to town council, see what it is, you know, what they recommend, with, of course, with Bill's input, and let's reconvene at the next hearing, or what do you think?
If I might, while, while we, of course, wait to get this project fixed and the water to take care of, while that's happening, it continues to rain.
Yeah, we still have.
And as I continue to shovel out my, my drain, I'm going back out there the following weekend after a rainstorm and shoveling it out again.
Well, that's half the problem I have now, is after the first storm we had, it washed dirt, silt, everything into all of the drainage that I put into the, into that property, other than what Gallo put in, and it's basically no good anymore. You know, you have, how much dirt and silt can soak into these rocks to drain into a pipe, to drain out this way? It's not gonna get past all that silt on top of the rocks, it's just gonna wash over and wash away. So all the drainage and money I put in is now useless.
The drain that I did put in the back of my property along the base of that hill, runs along the side of my property along Briar Cliff, and empties into the storm drain that's at the end of my, end of my driveway. And when, exactly, when you, when you stand out there in a rainstorm and you look at it, it's just, it's, it looks like chocolate milk pouring out of the, out of the drain.
Yeah.
Can I point out one other thing that may be of interest to you?
Sure.
So, just again, this being where the major water accumulation was, right now, this is a Gallo-owned property. What I learned about how they kind of tricked all this is, they would dig ditches that, before there were houses, a ditch would just empty out to the street, and they would go down three, four feet, five feet. And that was very effective. Right now, they're having problems on this property containing the water, and they, they've built this up over here, but.
It's washed it up.
When they take that down, all, whatever problems we're having up here coming down, the same problem, I think, is gonna be here coming down.
Yeah, I have pictures of it washing out part of my neighbor's yard.
And Gallo still owns that property? They haven't sold that one yet?
They're working on it.
They're working on it. Because, I mean, I have pictures of it washing out, they put up the barrier, and they, I mean, during the last storm, they went to the drains down at, down at the end of history.
They put sandbags in the front of my driveway.
Sandbags around everything, you know, to.
And literally in the front of my driveway. I had to, I had to go up Amherst and loop around them just to get out of my driveway. And I, I confronted them as they were doing it, and they said, this is our street. This is, yeah, this is our street, we can put sandbags wherever we want.
Wow.
And I told them to have Steve Gallo call me if that's where they'd like to place them, and they basically told me to go screw.
And he left for work and they put the sandbags.
And I moved them out of the way, and then they came back and put them back.
So, well, it's been a travesty since forever.
Yeah, I, I know.
As long as I remember. And then 1968, they stopped the development there, and the people that owned it at that time said they weren't gonna develop it because of the hill of water that lay behind Amherst and behind Regis. Okay? And they just weren't gonna, it was never gonna be developed, and then somehow someone bought it and it was still in effect, and then it just, it was just.
Yep, and then the rain, yep, on and on.
You know, it's, it's unconscionable that anybody could do it and grade like that.
I agree.
I'm not quite sure, maybe we can get some kind of an answer from the town council.
Yeah, let us do some.
That would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, very much.
We're out of options, because as you might know, Steve Gallo doesn't exactly return the three of our phone calls.
Yeah, and I don't know how much more, I don't have enough money to keep throwing at this.
Agreed.
That's what they depend on.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
You may have to get the neighbor together and get a class action suit.
You also notice, Steve Gallo or a representative didn't join us this evening, of course, because what would they say, right?
They'll just wait for the grass to grow in.
Mm-hmm, that's what they told me, yeah.
I looked at some of the dirt on the front lawns of that today up in there, that's, that bylaw needs to change. If what a sex minimum.
If you look in, in front of my driveway right now, it's all mud, right now, from the rainstorm, it all washes down. And the way they graded my driveway, it sort of goes like this at the, at the bottom. So if you go look, there's probably three inches of mud and dirt.
Silk.
Silk, right at the bottom of my driveway, that if it kept going, it would just go into the storm drain, but instead it just collects, like I said, right at the foot of my driveway.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, couple of weeks.
May 14th, the next meeting.
May 14th, the next meeting. Keep you posted. We have opportunity to, you know, speak with Mr. Henigan and town council and feel good.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Thanks for those. Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Uh, Kevin.
Kevin? Kevin?
We, uh, we, uh-
I have pictures anyway. I have plenty of pictures. Yeah, we've got plenty, yeah. Thank you.
Which item is it?
Trust me, I'll move it for you.
John, John.
Oh, we didn't skip over it.
I saw it all the way around.
Oh, okay.
What about the signature one twenty-one south?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys are gonna miss that.
Already said, oh yeah, okay. Where are you standing?
Didn't see that. All right, so this is the credit union?
Yeah, I just wanted, we, uh, sent a letter in asking that the board please consider a couple of changes we're proposing to be de minimis. And what the changes are, is that, first of all, talking to the contractor, uh, when they first sent things out for bid, they worried that they would be picking up groundwater where the, the drain line is deep. And so, this, by the way, the plan that you see in front of you here is the approved version, and we're just posing to make the infiltration structure actually, instead of what was shown here, was twenty-six modules, make it actually thirty, to make it bigger. As a conservative measure, 'cause they were worried that we would pick up groundwater. And along the same lines, where there were thirty-two chambers shown here, we're actually, they wanted to make, we're making this, proposing to make this thirty-six. And again, the twenty-six modules here, and the thirty-two here that were approved, that was all, uh, what was, what was modeled in the drainage report, and that was taking care of even the hundred-year storm. But we're just looking to make it even just a little bigger, because of worry that we're gonna pick up groundwater. That's one change. The other is that, uh, we have retaining wall here, which is fifty feet long, that we wanna shorten to twenty-four feet, and a retaining wall here that we wanna eliminate in favor of just a one-to-one rip wrap. And there, so, that's the only, actually, also a slight, uh, lengthening of where we showed guard rail.
So, what's-
No changes whatsoever to the building, not the location, not the size, not the elevation, not the orientation.
Why the change the retaining walls to rip wrap?
Uh, actually, because, because that's a little cheaper, and it's actually in part for making the, uh, the infiltration bigger here and here.
But that is right across the street from the neighborhood that we're trying to, uh, you know?
And I could show you, actually, one thing I was looking at while we were, I was waiting, uh, is that this wall was going to leave, this was the thirty-scale plan, was gonna leave, um, about fifteen feet worth of, uh, trees between what was altered and the curb. And the proposed plan with the one-to-one rip wrap slope is gonna leave almost exactly that same, about one foot less. You'll be the witness for being right there.
It's gonna be a foot less of trees?
Yes. It's, so it's the same, what's, actually, the, the buffer from the neighborhood is the trees that are remaining, because right off the curb here, this is the section where it rises right off the curb where there are big trees.
Right.
And again, this is leaving about fifteen feet, and this is the twenty-scale one, right? Yes. And this, I don't know if anybody wants to say, uh, this is leaving either fourteen or fifteen feet also. So, it's functionally, it's almost exactly the same as far as the buffer that is, that is gonna be there.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason that is, is because we proposed here, actually, a couple of feet between the base of the wall and the curb. We dropped that down to one. You had the height, you had the thickness of the wall here, which was a two-foot wall, and you have what was proposed behind it, was gonna be altered for putting in the wall. Whereas, so, we brought this one-to-one slope closer to the curb, and you don't have the thickness of the wall, and at the top of the slope, that's it. So, we probably lost one foot of separation from curb to alteration.
Mm-hmm.
So, functionally, I don't think there's gonna be any real difference, uh, for what is there, for what can be kept as far as those big trees, which we want to keep in place.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause that's what's opposite-
That's what's gonna provide the buffer for the neighborhood.
Especially from Preston over to here, that's, that's where things are really nice and thick. In fact, I actually brought a couple pictures, but I don't know if anyone wants the same.
And what's the thinking behind shortening the other wall?
Um, just the same, again, the same deal, it's just, uh, as an economic measure, it's, it's a little cheaper. And that area actually is all clear anyway. This, there's not trees that are, um-
So aesthetically, um-
'Cause this, I, I don't have a picture from there. This, by the, this is what you see at, uh-
No.
Yeah. Through the chair, can I ask how much savings this is actually gonna be?
I, I don't, actually, I, the number was not transmitted to me, so I can't even, uh, I tell you, I apologize, but it was basically looked at as, as kind of a trade-off, money-wise, was being extra conservative with the drainage, added a little extra cost, and it looked at what could be done that wouldn't change it. And we did look at, again, that thickness of, uh-
So, could you show again, please,
Sure.
where the wall is proposed not to be and where the rip wrap wrap will take.
Sure, the wall is, is, is this hatched, uh, structure from, between my two index figures? It's two hundred and twenty feet long here, and that's, let's give you a reference point. That's almost, uh, uh, DMH seven to, gee, it's not a good one here.
I can pick up where it is. So, it's about two hundred and twenty feet of wall that won't be there, and it'll be rip wrap?
That is correct.
Far about what depth, what height, what slope?
Uh, well, it varies. At the worst point, you've got about seven feet of height. Uh, you've got obviously less, less on toward the end.
Higher or lower than the street?
Oh, no, it's, this is all lower than the street.
Lower than the street.
And the way this runs, actually, is, for instance, right here, if you're in the street, you're just below elevation five-ten, you go up the curb, you're at elevation five-ten. Then there, right there, my fingernail's five-twelve, right there is five-fourteen. And actually, I don't know how well this shows, but I brought some pictures from the Google Street Maps. This is a car, um, sitting right at the end of Preston.
Mm-hmm.
If you're right at the end of Preston, if you look to one side, the trees are, eh, they're getting a little, they're, they're a little more sparse back here. But from opposite about the middle of Preston, running, uh, it's basically southward, that's where you've got your best tree cover on site.
And it's not going away?
No, and that's, and the, and the depth from what would be altered here to curb is what was proposed and what was approved is really the same within about a foot of what's proposed with the rip wrap. So-
Do you have a question?
Through you, Mrs. Chin.
Yes.
The, the wall will only be seen, it'll be seen from the Southwood Street side.
Exactly.
And the parking, interior parking lot. But the wall is gonna have, will have growth take place in it, but there, you know, weeds and stuff. But the rip wrap will have a lot more growth and weeds and junk growing in it. I mean, I think we were pretty gracious and whatever when we, when we did this whole site and everything like that. I think, I would like to see the wall remain and not be replaced by rip wrap. I'm only one person.
Steve?
I, I understand that sentiment.
I'd like it to remain as was approved.
Nick?
I tend to agree.
Scott?
Contrarian here, I don't think it changes too much in terms of shielding it from the neighbors. Now, if I look.
John?
Uh, what size rip wrap?
Uh, it's a hundred pound, which is basically a, uh, a foot by foot by eight inches is a hundred pounds. Um, a hundred and fifty pounds per cubic foot. So, again, foot by foot by eight.
And is the guard rail gonna remain?
Yes, in fact, we actually proposed extending the guard rail. If you compare on the plans, uh, what we just sent in dated April ten versus that one, we extended it, 'cause I was just looking at it, where, where we had it end over opposite Preston, and it just looked to me like we probably should have had it go a little further at that time anyway. So, we did extend it on the April ten plans.
Did your landscape architect or engineer approve the rip wrap that it's gonna hold that banking for the stamp?
Uh, well, I'm the engineer.
Okay.
Uh, and it will hold the rip, uh, one-to-one with, especially with good-sized pieces. Not just people dumping little, you know?
Are you gonna stamp the redesign drawing?
I did. I'm sorry, well, we, uh, we sent in April ten dated plans, um, as part of the submission with the letter asking that these changes be considered de minimis.
She submitted this on four-ten?
Uh, no, we submitted it last, or day was it, Adam?
Thursday.
Thursday.
There's your, you have your list, is your change, your last change is four-ten?
The, uh, the letter was April eighteen.
I don't have a problem with the rip wrap?
Sorry, I was just coming back from delivering it when Adam actually sent a message saying, you know, you gotta be in by noon today, or, or you can't be on the agenda.
I don't have a problem with the rip wrap as long as it's maintained. 'Cause it looks like, you know, it'll look real nice when you get the weeds growing through. But if you maintain it, it's gonna look, it'll look nice. Uh, what, what, what are you gonna bed the rip wrap in?
We actually, um, I think in the detail, we show a foot of gravel and a, uh, Marafi gravel and a Marafi one forty N, uh, paper, uh, fabric, excuse me, yeah, uh, yes. Hundred-pound rip wrap, uh, Marafi one forty N over twelve inches of gravel.
Right.
I don't have a problem with it.
Um, we need a motion two, and we all do it in one. I mean, increase the size of the, um, catch bay.
The infiltration structure.
Infiltration structure, thank you.
That one's again here and here.
So, it's up to the board, but the town engineer hasn't had a chance to review this yet, but there's the, the catch base, and I don't know if they wanna consider their input before we make a decision.
Any thoughts, Bill?
Well, just in general, the increase in the infiltration system, obviously, no issues with that. I think it's conservative to add to that. Um, the only comment, I don't have a preference one way or the other with rip wrap versus retaining wall. Is that stone-based or wall, or it was a concrete?
It was gonna be conicalero block.
Okay, block.
Two-foot block, yeah.
Um, my only concern would be, I know that the, the neighbors were very vocal in this area, very concerned about the trees, um, like, so that's doing that, you know, I'm gonna back it forth on. But whether or not it's a retaining wall or rip wrap, I think they're both structurally will be fine. But it's just-
As long as the trees are maintained.
As long as the impact is no different than what it was going to be, I think that's the critical part of it. 'Cause that's where the-
And, and through the chair, just, again, just, as far as the aesthetics, um, this is a face which looks this way.
That way.
It, it can't even be seen from, uh, Elmwood or Preston.
Through the chair, one more question. How far into the drip line are you gonna cut to put your rip wrap in, on the trees?
Where, the rip wrap slope is gonna end at the top of the slope. They're not gonna go any further than they have to, 'cause again, the message is very clear from the, the meetings-
Right, that doesn't answer my question. My question was, how far into the drip line of the tree is, is the slope of the rip wrap gonna be?
I guess I'm not sure what you're at, what, maybe I'm misunderstanding your question.
Drip line of the tree is the outside foliage?
The crown, yeah.
That's, that's the edge of your drip line? How far beyond that are you gonna go in, beyond that, or are you gonna be outside that?
There's some trees right, right now, there are trees from the curb to probably, actually, probably just about the Route twelve right of way.
Yeah, but those are gonna be coming out, so-
Well, some of it-
Parking lot, yeah. We're talking about along the roadway.
Yeah.
Your rip wraps go two hundred and twenty feet from left to right, correct?
From here to here.
Correct.
In that location.
And you have trees in that area, that two hundred and twenty feet, correct?
Correct.
We don't have it, we're gonna get some prior race markers. So, when you take the drip line of the tree, which is the extent of your outside foliage, when it rains, it comes down, and that's what feeds the roots.
Yeah.
So, I wanna know if you're gonna be in underneath the branches to start that rip wrap slope? Are you gonna be outside that, outside the limit of the branches?
We're definitely gonna be in underneath some branches because they're, for instance-
Are you gonna be closer than three feet to the stump?
Which tree? I mean, there are-
Any tree?
Some, yes, some, no. There, there's, there's probably a tree right here where I'm touching that we're not gonna be within the drip line. There's probably a tree right where, you know, just above where this wall is proposed, that we would be in the drip line.
My concern is, anyway, if it's a tree this big and you're inside the drip line, I really don't care it's gonna survive. You get a big tree, and you take half the root system for that, for the, uh, rip wrap, I'm wondering if you're gonna hit the taproot. Taproot doesn't always go straight down.
Sure, I, I understand your point.
Will the tree survive?
But again, as was noting, the distance, that tree, that there was gonna be no alteration under the approved plan-
Yeah.
Is basically the same as with the rip wrap.
Is the back, that, that's a good point. Is the back of the existing or proposed retaining wall-
Yeah.
The same point as the top of the rip wrap?
It is almost. It's within about, it's within about a foot, because-
So, you go on a further foot into the tree to get the rip wrap?
Because we left more space off the curb before the wall, and then you have the thickness of the wall, and then you had, you were gonna alter beyond the back face of the wall. It wasn't gonna be a perfect, you know, excavation. So, when you got all of this done, you were gonna be about six feet or so in, and if you have a six-foot rise with the one-to-one rip wrap slope, you've got that same six feet in. So, the alteration, what trees are gonna be, be endangered by this as opposed to the wall, I think it's hard to say that it's gonna be any, any significantly different.
I'll make a motion that we approve the drainage modifications on each end. You got one up near the building, and you got one down the other end, we're all right. But that we keep the original wall versus the rip wrap.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Is that a three?
Um, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.